Good morning, Clackamas County. I'm going to call to order the October 17th, 2024 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. County Administrator, kick us off.
Thank you, Vice Chair West. Chair Smith is not able to be here in person today, but she is online, and she's asked Vice Chair West to chair this meeting today. We'll do a roll call in just a second. First staff support today: County Council, Jane Veto; Clerk to the Board, Andrew Jirocky; Commissioner Savis is out of the office today because he's attending a regional transportation meeting on behalf of Clackamas County. Roll call. In the room, Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Online, Chair Smith. One moment, please. She's there. We're going to unmute her, please. Chair Smith?
Hello, I'm here. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And in the room, Vice Chair West.
Here. Thank you, Gary. I'll now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I enjoy that every time we do it. Good morning, everyone. We're holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time later in this meeting. I'd like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, that we will use the Robert Rules of Order, and we'll be focusing -- we'll be following those in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Gary, can you please introduce the first item for us today?
Yes, Vice Chair. There are two presentations today. The first is Approval of a Resolution Recognizing October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Clackamas County. Erin Hinkleman, the Director of the Family Justice Center from the Sheriff's Office, and Sarah, I think I forgot your last name, please, Sarah Van Dyke from the -- please introduce yourselves. I apologize, Sarah. I'm sorry. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Good morning. Erin Hinkleman, Director for Safe Place Family Justice Center.
I'm Sarah Van Dyke. I'm the Domestic Violence Systems Coordinator for Clackamas County.
So, thank you, Chair Smith, and members of the Commission for having us here again this year. We are here today to respectfully request you declare October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Domestic violence is a pervasive, life-threatening crime that impacts our community at every level, from individual families to public health to the local economy. Domestic Violence Awareness Month is a national campaign dedicated to raising awareness about domestic violence. Every October, organizations and individuals unite across the country for a national effort to uplift the needs, voices, and experiences of survivors. Since 2013, a Safe Place Family Justice Center has served as Clackamas County's collective response to adults and children impacted by family violence. The center is comprised of 10 public and nonprofit partners co-located under one roof and provides trauma-informed wraparound services to survivors and their children free of charge. Couple of our partners are here in the audience with us today. A Safe Place has provided support to more than 7,000 survivors who accessed services at the center for the first time, assisted 4,586 individuals in filing a protective order, and have had over 35,000 visits for services. Our hope is to improve the lives of survivors and their children through empowerment, coordinated service, and collaboration.
Clackamas County has a strong coordinated response to domestic violence with dedicated partners working in multidisciplinary teams and collaborative committees. These partners include county and local law enforcement advocates, court staff, community-based organizations, healthcare services, among many others. A few highlights include: The Strangulation Response Initiative Team continues to work on improving the identification and response to domestic violence-related strangulation, which includes developing and leading the state in the use of strangulation forensic evidence kits, or SKITS. The Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team collects data on domestic violence-related homicides and performs fatality reviews, along with producing a comprehensive report. We have supported the presence of the Clackamas Safe Connection in the community to provide safe, supervised visitation for families impacted by domestic violence. The bravery that survivors of domestic violence demonstrate on their journey to safety gives those of us who work with them inspiration to continue to improve the systems they must access. Thank you for being an integral part of this movement. Together, we can create change and build a world free from domestic violence.
At this time, we'd like to request to read the proclamation into the record.
Please do.
Okay. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime in Clackamas County that affects people of all races, ages, gender, and income levels, and whereas family is the foundation of a safe and healthy community, and it is the goal of Clackamas County for our communities to be safe, and whereas more than 16 million people in the U.S. suffer from intimate partner abuse per year in the United States.
Whereas every minute, 32 people experience intimate partner violence in the United States, and whereas 31% of families involved with the Department of Human Services Child Welfare Department had domestic violence as a component of their case in 2022, and whereas 1,158 victims of domestic violence requested a protection order in Clackamas County in 2023.
Whereas 764 victims accessed wraparound services for the first time at a Safe Place Family Justice Center, for a total of 2,444 visits in 2023, and whereas victims should have helped to find the compassion, comfort, and healing they need, and abusers should be held accountable to the fullest extent of the law.
Whereas only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to the serious crime, and whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for people to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, services, and assistance to victims.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I'm going to open up to the Commissioners here, online and in the room. Do any of the Commissioners have any comments? Commissioner Scholl, you're up.
Yes, thank you for presenting this proclamation today. But I want to remind the people of Clackamas County that in Clackamas County, we don't just have Domestic Violence Month in October, but all year long, the staff of the county, our social services are standing by to help people who might have a concern of impending violence or one that's already happened. So, we have -- I don't have the number before me today to share with you, but people need to know they can call the county for help and take action to get counseling for their family member before the violence occurs. The other thing, too, is I believe that Sheriff's Office still has what they call the CAT Team. I think that was a civil action team, correct me if I'm wrong, that is trained to find -- to look at cases of abuse, especially those affecting children, and to coordinate that person with the help they might need. So, again, all year long is Domestic Violence Awareness Year in Clackamas County. Thank you.
Chair Smith, would you like to say anything?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner West, and thank you for chairing the meeting for me. I appreciate the reminder that we do this every month. Not that we need a reminder, but it's a message to the public that we're very serious about this in Clackamas County, and we do have resources, and we do have a way to heal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schrader.
I just wanted to thank you all for the work you've done through the years. Way back when I was on the board, and I've been privileged to sit on the Grand Ron Community Fund, and I know that, at least within the last few years, one of the things they allow us to do is to have a super vote for when we see that organizations that have done remarkable work, and I was very, very happy to be able to do that for you folks at one time in the near past, because I've known you for years, I've worked with you for years, I have a great deal of respect for Melissa and your staff and the work that you do, as well as the way you've coordinated things with our public safety folks. I see one of our sheriff's deputies in the room, too. So, thank you, and it's always a pleasure to do this every year, to remind people that there are vulnerable women, children, and other folks out there who are suffering because of this, and you have been the mainstay in this community.
Thank you.
With all of the Commissioners here in the dais, we have a symbol, we have a purple ribbon, which brings awareness to this very important topic that we're talking about today. I'm going to put mine on today, I'm going to wear it around. But I think it's important for us to really give a special shout-out to what a great asset we have in -- this might be too thick. I will figure it out. I'm trying. This is a little too fleecy. Wait, there we go. Right there, right next to part of Westland Football. There we go. The Safe Place Family Justice Center is quite an amazing asset and full of unsung heroes that do this harrowing work to help keep families, vulnerable populations, and our communities safer. It is an asset that not all local jurisdictions have, but we do in Clackamas County, and we value that tool, and countless lives and families, children, women, spouses, partners have benefited and come out of such trauma because of the work that is done at the Safe Place Family Justice Center. Thank you to our law enforcement, thank you to the Sheriff's Office, from the depths of our hearts, thank you to all the staff that engages in this. Many in this room, we may not know who we're sitting next to, may have had some type of intersection with this type of trauma. People in our workplace, in our churches, in our community centers, in our neighborhoods, and it is a real issue that we must highlight and continue to work to make rare in our community. And so, I am fully supportive, of course, of this awareness that we're doing with this resolution, and I want to encourage everybody engaged in this to keep up the good work that you do. With that, I would like to entertain a motion. Commissioner Schrader, would you like to give me a motion?
Yes, I would. I move to approve the resolution recognizing October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
I would like a second, please.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Scholl. We have a motion that's been moved by Commissioner Schrader and a second by Commissioner Scholl. Do we have any further discussion on this very important topic? I am seeing none. Clerk, please call the poll.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye.
Vice Chair West.
Aye. The motion passes 4-0. Thank you so much for coming before the board today. Okay, the motion is passed. Gary, what is next?
Thank you. The next presentation is a presentation regarding earthquake preparedness and Clackamas County Great Shakeout Drill. Daniel Neibauer, the Director of Disaster Management, will present. This is a statewide earthquake drill today that's going to occur in approximately three minutes. So, we are not going to practice the drill in this room, but there's going to be an announcement and some loud announcements during the speaker in just a moment. But Daniel, you've got about two minutes to start, then we'll pause and then rejoin your presentation. Go ahead, Daniel.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Smith, Vice Chair West, Commissioners Administrator Smith. At 10:17 today, all county employees will participate in the Great Shakeout Drill. Great Shakeout earthquake drills are an opportunity to practice how to be safer during earthquakes, specifically to practice drop, cover, and hold. Drop, cover, and hold is the correct protective action to take. We'll watch a video in a moment, which will demonstrate the appropriate actions for various situations. It is important to do a drop, cover, and hold drill to learn how to react quickly. You must practice often. You may only have seconds to protect yourself in an earthquake before a strong shaking knocks you down or drops something on you. Practicing helps be ready to respond. Oregon Revised Statute, ORS 401.900, requires all state and local agencies to participate in an annual drill. Residents and businesses are encouraged to take part on the drill as well. There are about 1,000 earthquakes in Washington and Oregon every year, with about two dozen of those being large enough to just about be felt. The most recent notable earthquakes in Oregon were in 1993, a magnitude 5.6 in Scott Mills and a magnitude 5.9 and 6.0 in Calamuth Falls. These are relatively smaller earthquakes, producing a 5-7 magnitude earthquake for about 30 to 60 seconds. The earthquake that would have the largest impact to Oregon and Clackamas County would come from the Cascadia Subduction Zone, a 600-mile fault. That's about 70 to 100 miles off the Pacific coast that stretches from northern Vancouver Island in Canada to northern California, the United States. It is capable of producing over a 9.0 magnitude earthquake that would last potentially five to seven minutes. The last time an earthquake on this fault occurred was January 26, 1700. The average recurrence of an earthquake on this fault is 243 years, which is about 41 times in the last 10,000 years.
I'm going to pause just for a moment.
This is a shakeout, not a blow. Drop, cover, and hold on. Drop is important during a large earthquake. Be round by your strong side of the ground. Take cover if you're something dirty. Protect your soul project from throwing across the room. Hold on to your shelter until the shaking stops. If you can't get under something, stay low and protect your head and neck with your arms. F, round, but obviously might fall or be thrown in. You should clear and avoid a dangerous place. This drill is a shakeout, not a simple, technical, survival. Thank you for taking part in the great shaking.
All right, go ahead, please.
So, the average recurrence rate is 243 years, but that has ranged between 200 and 900 years. The impacts of the subduction zone earthquake would be wide-reaching, both directly and indirectly affecting Clackamas County. This is why, in addition to knowing and practicing this protective action of drop, cover, and hold, we recommend that every employee and community member have a family disaster and emergency plan, as well as items to live off for two weeks. A home kit should have two weeks of water, food, shelter, and disaster sanitation; a vehicle kit with items to shelter in place or to use to get to a family meeting place; and a work kit to be able to shelter and place it at work and potentially be able to get home. There's also the shake alert. In Oregon, it's an early warning system that helps detect earthquakes and disseminates alerts ahead of shaking arriving, and that's because it detects the shaking at the epicenter and then alerts out forward. However, you would only get about 10 seconds of warning via this, and there are several utilities that use this to help shut down critical systems before they go. And then, a quick video will now play demonstrating how to drop, cover, and hold.
Drop, cover, and hold on is the most appropriate way to protect yourself in the event of an earthquake. When the shaking begins, drop to your hands and knees. This position protects you from falling and allows you to move if necessary. Cover your head, neck, and entire body if possible under a sturdy table or desk. Hold on to your shelter until the shaking stops. Be prepared to move with your shelter if the shaking shifts it around. If no table or desk is nearby, go to an interior wall or low-rise furniture and cover your head and neck. If driving, go to the side of the road, stop, and set the parking brake. Avoid bridges. If you have a wheelchair or have mobility impairments, set the wheel locks and lean forward. If it's a foot, hold on to the bed and protect your head. Practice drop, cover, and hold on. When the shaking starts, you don't want to think about what to do. You want to know what to do. It could save your life.
And finally, I'd like to thank everyone today who helped make the drill happen, those making the announcements in the different county buildings, facility management staff, and Erica Hento, DM staff here with me today, who has led the effort for planning this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Gary, what do we have next?
Thank you. Chair, would you please convene as the Housing Authority of Clackamas County?
I will now adjourn as the Board of County Commissioners and reconvene as the Clackamas County Housing Authority.
This is Request for Consent Agenda for the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. Joining you online is Housing Resident Commissioner Anne Leenstra. Commissioner Leenstra, are you there?
Yes, good morning.
Thank you. Good morning. Andrew, would you please read the consent agenda item?
Item 2A, Approval of an Amendment to an Intergovernmental Agreement with Home Forward for Resident Services for Public Housing Families. Amendment values $112,550.28 for six months. Total agreement value increased to $227,541.41 for 1.5 years. Funding is through Supportive Housing Services Funds. No county general funds are involved. Vice Chair, that concludes the consent agenda.
Does any Commissioner wish to remove any items from this consent agenda? I am seeing none. Does anyone want to provide me with a motion?
Anne, would you like to do that?
Anne Leenstra, would you like to provide a motion?
I will present a motion to accept the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Seconded.
I think that's 2A, Resolution Amendment for Intergovernmental Agreement Without Home Forward for Resident Services for Public Housing Families.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
It's been moved by Commissioner Leenstra and seconded by Commissioner Scholl. Do we have any further discussion on this consent agenda? Clerk, please take the poll.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Leenstra.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye.
Vice Chair West.
Aye. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you for that. Gary, what's next?
Thank you, Commissioner Leenstra, for joining. Vice Chair, would you please adjourn as a Housing Authority and reconvene as the Board of Commissioners?
I will now adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you. Next is the Consent Agenda for the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners. Andrew, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Board of County Commissioners Consent Agenda. Item 3A, Elected Officials. Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes. Item B, County Administration. 1. Approval of a Federal Subrecipient Grant Agreement with Habitat for Humanity Portland Metro East for Preconstruction Infrastructure at the West Lake Grove Townhomes. Grant value is $800,000 for 1.5 years. Funding is through county allocated American Rescue Plan Act funds. No county general funds are involved. C. 1. County Council. Approval of Settlement Agreement in the Case of Lori Bell v. Clackamas County et al. Value of Settlement is $125,000. Funding is through County Risk Fund and Water Environment Services budgeted funds. D. Disaster Management. 1. Approval of Amendment with the State of Oregon for Fiscal Year 2023 Emergency Management Performance Grant Agreement. Amendment value is $30,668 for one year. Total agreement value is increased to $280,574 for one year. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Emergency Management and matching funds of $140,287 of budgeted county general funds. E. Health Housing and Human Services. 1. Approval to Submit the Annual Consolidated Application for U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Continuum of Care Grants. Total application value is $6,893,194 for one year. Match requirement is 25% of the awarded amount for a maximum amount of $1,723,298.50. County match obligation is funded by Supportive Housing Services and $142,763 in budgeted county general funds. 2. Approval of an Amendment to the Revenue Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Health Authority to Fund Public Health Services. Amendment value is $612,356.27 for one year. Total agreement value is increased to $12,097,806.27 for two years. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. 3. Approval of Purchase and Sale Intergovernmental Agreement with the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District for the purchase of property at 15301 Southeast 92nd Avenue, Clackamas. Purchase price is $3,500,000. Funding is through Supportive Housing Services, Community Mental Health Program, and American Rescue Plan Act funds. No county general funds are involved. Vice Chair, that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. Would or does any Commissioner want to remove or wish to remove any items from today's consent agenda? Can I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Commissioner Scholl and seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Any further discussion on today's consent agenda? I know consent agendas aren't generally exciting. This one is pretty exciting, as we make a big step forward in our recovery campus here in Clackamas County to address homelessness, substance abuse, and mental health disorders in our county. This is -- we talked about this further, we talked about it a lot already this week, but this is a big step forward and something we've been working on for over a year now, and I think it's quite inspirational, and I'm excited by it. So, with that, Clerk, can you please take the poll?
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Thank you, Chair Smith. Vice Chair West.
Aye. The motion passes 4-0. I will now recess as the Board of Clackamas County Commissioners and convene as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board of Directors. Gary, what's next?
Next is the Consent Agenda for the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. Andrew, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Item 4A, Approval of Purchase and Sale Intergovernmental Agreement with Clackamas County for the sale of the property at 15301 Southeast 92nd Avenue, Clackamas. Sale price is $3,500,000. Funding is through Supportive Housing Services, Community Mental Health Program, and American Rescue Plan Act funds. No county general funds are involved. B. Approval of Board or Delegating Signing Authority of Grant applications, grants, cooperative agreements, and amendments or renewals up to $150,000 to the district administrator. Vice Chair, that concludes the consent agenda.
Does any Director wish to remove any items from today's consent agenda? Seeing none. Can I have a motion from one of the Directors?
Oh, go ahead. Oh, me?
Anyone.
Go ahead, Mark. You do it. Seconded.
I move to approve the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Consent Agenda.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Director Scholl and seconded by Director Schrader. Any further discussion?
Commissioner, Director Scholl.
Yes. This purchase today, this authorization for purchase, gives us hope to address a pressing problem in Clackamas County that has to do with addiction. It's a very serious, it's a very difficult problem for us to deal with, but we have made this decision to move ahead with the purchase of this property with the hopes of designing a facility that will have a very positive impact in reducing opioid addiction and the pain and suffering that comes with it. I have been concerned about this purchase. It's very ambitious. The scope is ambitious, and I just want to remind the Directors of North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, the district staff, and the rest of our staff here in Clackamas County, that this purchase comes with a great deal of responsibility, and that is to ensure that the scope and design of the project is in scale with the need of the people of this county, not overdesigned, not underdesigned, and also that this project comes with a great deal of responsibility for the people of the community. They must be remembered, and their sensitivities, their concerns must be respected. And so, as we move forward, it's my expectation that the county and the entity that is responsible for managing and operating the Addiction Recovery Center do it with total commitment to -- operating the Addiction Recovery Center do it with total commitment to maintaining the peace, the security of the existing neighborhood. It's with this expectation that I give my approval today. Thank you.
Chair Smith.
Thank you, Commissioner West. I look forward to putting this recovery center together. It's going to be necessary to collaborate with our state, regional, local partners for not only the treatment, but for the funding and program development as well. So as we move forward, this is probably one of the most ambitious projects that we've seen at Clackamas County because of all the moving parts and all involved in treating this really pressing problem we have in society today. Thank you, Commissioners, for the support of this. I appreciate that very much.
Commissioner Schrader.
I said, I just want to mention that I have great faith in the staff that works for this county, the people that work and do this work, and I know that they will take all safety considerations, that they will make sure that the recovery center is run well, and that it is safe for everyone who resides in that local community. I have great faith and trust in them. I do know that there are some folks who are a bit worried, and I'm here to tell you that, given the quality of the folks that do this work for this county, I'm very hopeful that will allay any fears you might have, and know that we will be good partners and make sure the local community remains safe and sound for everyone.
You know, seeing big projects like this is uncommon for Oregon. Most of the news is of the dysfunction and the lack of ability to fully address the crisis before us. There's a lot of news articles across not just Oregon, but nationally and globally about how we are floundering and not rising to the occasion to meet the crisis head-on. Much of the effort seemed to be more ideological than effective. In Clackamas County, we were purposeful in implementing a recovery-oriented system of care that's much different than the rest of the state, and it's by no accident that we have by far the best outcomes. Right now, we have put more people in the permanent supportive housing than Multnomah County, though we are half their size and have way less money. It was just announced that the Joint Office of Homelessness between Portland and Multnomah County, it looks like Portland is wanting a divorce from that intergovernmental agreement. Citizens look at us and they wonder what are their leaders doing? How much longer do they have to step over bodies or see human despair in the streets and mass dysfunction and massive bureaucracies unable to actually deal with the people who are suffering in our communities? Oregon has not invested in large infrastructure projects. We can't house our way out of this. I can tell you, someone living in a tent on the sidewalk, what their brand-new, government-paid-for apartment will look like by looking at their tent. We don't have the infrastructure to meet the individual where they're at on their pathway to recovery, and the state has divested from such efforts to build an entire care continuum for many years, election cycle after election cycle. But over the last year and a half, the Board has indulged me and worked closely with me to be bigger and better than we have been. And as a team, the five of us wanted to be bold, and we did that. And this six-acre campus, which will provide an entire care continuum, no matter where the individual is, acutely or chronically within their needs, they'll get the treatment they need. We believe people who need treatment must and morally have the right to access to treatment. That's not how we've governed in Oregon. That's not how we've led. And I think that we are also clear that we believe that recovery is possible, that people can be sober, they can be a part of a community again, they can rebuild their lives, and in Clackamas County, we are committed to make that happen and to help them do that, even when those who can't advocate for themselves any longer because they're so far down spiraling in their disease process. In Clackamas County, we are committed to making sure that we rescue them from that spiral and get them the care they deserve. Not making excuses, not pointing fingers, continuing to do the work day by day, have some of the best outcomes in the entire state. We operate within a different worldview, and we are committed to wrap around services, that they'll be extensive, a full support and a continuum of care. This includes detox, stabilization, mental health treatment, peer support, and more. We are thinking bigger than we have in the past. When there's an epidemic, when there's a crisis, you can't flounder, you have to respond, and we're doing that here, and we believe that we have the moral authority to do so at a local level to begin to solve these problems. This is not a, this is not a small consent agenda. Most people kind of gloss over consent agendas. This is a big deal for the county, and I am, I couldn't be more proud of my colleagues and the people who serve this county. I couldn't be more proud of any other elected body in the state of Oregon than this one today, that we are trying to climb mountains and remove barriers and do the work that so many have failed to do. In Clackamas County, we are rising to the occasion, and I'm very proud of everybody that's involved, and all of our partners, too many to mention, and this is just the very beginning. It's exciting stuff. So with that, and all of the great words said by all the colleagues, and I could recognize people in the staff for the work they're doing, I will go ahead and now call the vote and entertain, yeah, we have the motion. I will call the vote.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director Shoal.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye.
Vice Chair West.
Aye. The motion passes 5-0.
It's 4-0, Chair.
4-0. I'm pretty sure I know how Paul would have voted. Yeah, 4-0. I will now adjourn as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board of Directors and convene as the Water Environmental Services Board.
Next is the Consent Agenda for Water Environment Services. Andrew, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Item 5A, Approval of a Board Order Delegating Signing Authority of Grant Applications, Grants, Cooperative Agreements, and Amendments or Renewals Up to $150,000 to the District Administrator. B, Approval of a Settlement Agreement in the Case of Lori Bell v. Clackamas County et al. Value of Settlement is $125,000. Funding is through the County Risk Fund and Water Environment Services Budgeted Funds. Vice Chair, that concludes the consent agenda.
Does any member want to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Director Schrader and seconded by Director Shoal. Any further discussion on this consent agenda? Seeing none. Clerk, please take the poll.
Director Shoal.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye.
Vice Chair West.
The motion passes 4-0. I will now adjourn as the Water Environment Services Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Now we are here for public comment and public communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business, which are properly the object of the Board's consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon Revised Statute and County Code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submission for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first. Do we have any blue cards?
No, Vice Chair.
We do not have any blue cards. Do we have anybody online that would like to testify?
If you are attending this meeting virtually and would now like to offer public comment, I'll ask you to please raise your hand, and I will call on you in the order that I see. This is a final call. If you are attending as a member of the public virtually and would like to speak, please raise your hand, and I will call on you in the order that I see. Vice Chair, I see none.
I will close the public communication portion of this meeting and will move on. Gary, what's next?
Next is County Administrator Update. That's me. I'd like to recognize our employees and the good work we do here at Clackamas County. Today, I have a great story to share. It's a little bit longer, but I think it's worth your attention. So our county road department does chip sealing, which is a way to treat road pavements without totally using asphalt. And recently, we had our county contractor doing some chip seal work in an area of unincorporated Clackamas County near Oregon City, and a person who lived near that project wrote us a letter about our transportation development supervisor, Travis Wooton, and his outstanding service. Here is the letter. Travis arrived on time, and we reviewed the contractor's work. Then we went outside and walked the shoulder of the road so that he could see the chip rock that was in my planter, grass, and driveway. During this time, Travis was very professional and engaged in finding a solution. Later this week, the contractor sent a handful of employees with shovels and brooms, and they began sweeping up as much of the chip rock as they could. I failed to mention, during this chip sealing, it impacted a nearby resident and went into their yard, and that person was unhappy, called the county to do something about it. Travis responded, and this is the response. Back to the letter. Travis kept in touch with me several times and made sure the cleanup was happening. I was very impressed with the service I received. Then I texted Travis to see if he could have a county sweeper sweep in front of my house, since the chip rock keeps shedding off the road and into the parking area. To my surprise, at 8:15 a.m. this morning, a county sweep was sweeping the parking area in front of my house. Amazing. The sweeper operator was even moving the garbage cans out of his way and then putting them back. Simply amazing. All of this extra effort was certainly not what I expected from my county government. The citizens of Clackamas County and transportation are lucky to have Travis Wooton as an employee. He has demonstrated to me his commitment to make the roads in Clackamas County as safe as possible and provide high-quality customer service. Thank you for that outstanding recognition. Thank you to Travis for his work, and this is the type of work county employees do every day. So thank you to our dedicated employees, and in this case, to Travis, and our road team and transportation and development. That is my update for today. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Gary. Once again, the government closest to you impacts your life the most. I'm now going to open this up to Commissioner comments. Does any Commissioner wish to, I don't have any lights. Does anybody, anybody want to, I can start with Commissioner Schrader.
Okay. Well, I've been working very hard on workforce issues. I just attended this morning our workforce board meeting for part of it and gave an update on the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act at the federal level and how at the national level with the National Association of Counties, we've been tracking that because it is the major funding mechanism for our workforce system, not just our local workforce board, but also state dollars, you know, funneled federal to state dollars, in order to make sure that people get connected to employers, that they have employment, that they have good, decent jobs, and that they are able to get to work. And one of the other things I've been working on, as many as you know, I've been prioritizing childcare because we have a childcare desert. And one of the things that we're looking at this is that childcare is also part of the economic development driver and also part of a prosperity initiative because it allows people to get to work. It allows people to know that their children are being taken care of safely in absolutely good environments. And so, I've been, we recently got a report from a coalition for childcare in Clackamas County, and it's a broad group of people from, you know, NGOs, you know, our nonprofits, as well as our early learning hub, looking at how we can increase capacity in that. And I'm hopeful, Commissioners, that if there's any legislation in Salem that helps address this issue, I'm not, I don't know if this is a board of priority, quite frankly, but if I testify, I will make sure that it's on my behalf. Wanted to assure you of that, but I would love to get you as much information as possible as we work forward, trying to get people back to work and in the workforce. And that's what I got today.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Shoal.
Yes, good morning, Clackamas County. I have just one thing to share with you today. Nineteen days until the general election. Fifteen October's passed, so it's too late to update your voter registration. Today, the ballots go out, and I want to encourage everyone, everyone, to vote. It's your civic responsibility, and the future of the republic is in your hands, in the hands of each and every individual in this nation who is of voting age. Be responsible. Take action. A reminder that this year, this general election is very important. Back in 1930, only about 12% of the gross national product was consumed by government at the federal, state, county, and city level. By 2023, that percent was at 45% of the gross national product. Here now, a year later, it's even moving higher. We can no longer afford the growth of government. People need to speak up, take action. Also, in Oregon, as you know, I hope you know, there's two voter pamphlets, one from the state and one from the county, and it's my expectation that everybody read them. There's some measures on the state ballot that are very important, and the outcome of those will affect your pocketbook one way or the other. So, again, let's make 5 November a huge voter turnout day in Oregon. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shoal. Chair Smith.
Thank you, Commissioner West, for chairing this meeting while I'm here, doing it on Zoom. Today, as we know, Metro is having a region-wide meeting at 1 o'clock to discuss the redo of the SHS tax that was passed in 2020. Clackamas County voters voted against the tax, but we were bound by the urban boundary with Metro. The two other counties of Multnomah and Washington passed it, so therefore, we're hitched to that train on paying the tax. Moving forward, Clackamas County has done remarkable work on this. We have prevented over 3,000 people from entering homelessness and placed more than 2,000 people into housing in the first three years. However, in this economic, difficult times of high inflation, the dollar's not going as far. There is going to be a tax reduction, and I've always said it's in my DNA to reduce taxes, and I believe that's what's going to happen. I believe Clackamas County can manage. We will take a look at our finances if there is indeed a 10% tax reduction immediately. We're very flexible. I think we will weather it. However, I don't think, for the moment, we will be starting any new programs. We need to finish the programs that we've already, already approved, and that was the problem with this. Metro Council said, "Counties, you must spend your money right away." Well, there's really only been three years of tax collections on the fiscal year reset, although the program is in its fourth year. We will see. I understand that Commissioners are going to be in attendance as well. I will be Zooming in, offering my testimony, but I just want people to know that we represent Clackamas County and the greatest good for Clackamas County, and if a tax reduction is coming, that will be good for the taxpayers. And remember one thing, this whole measure was designed to get homelessness to functional zero, not to perpetuate homelessness with a permanent tax. If we keep collecting money and do not reduce the homeless population in our jurisdictions to the north, that is problematic for Clackamas County, and I believe that's where the impetus for this redo is coming from. Commissioners, I look forward to seeing you, and I appreciate all the work you've been doing. Thank you very much.
I have a couple quick comments before we close out here. One of them is, this Board, Board of Clackamas County Commissioners urges-
One of them is, this board, Board of Clackamas County Commissioners, urges a no vote on Measure 118. We've taken a position as a board, so that is not as an individual, I believe all of us individual commissioners also oppose it, but this board urges Clackamas County voters and voters across the state and region to not support Measure 118. We believe it is bad for Oregon as your ballots arrive in the next day or two. I want to, I want to be very empathetic to something that I am hearing from constituents. You know, a lot of voters have every reason not to trust us on our big initiatives around homelessness and substance abuse. They've seen a lot of failure, the voters. Hard-paying taxpayers that just want clean, vibrant spaces in their own communities, which they have a right to, want to, want to finally see those things come back that were also common not that long ago in the Portland metro and Oregon. We've seen homeless, we've seen homeless camps not just impact the Portland greater, the Portland area, but we've also seen homeless camps create large forest fires that created mass destruction and chaos. We saw that out of the Deschutes area. We lost over 2 million acres of forest, not all of them due to the fires started by our houses' population, but, but it was an impact to everybody in the community. We've seen similar impact throughout Portland. We've all seen it. It's hard to ask the voter to trust us on this big six-acre campus. We haven't quite proven it yet, but I would ask you not to judge Clackamas County by Multnomah County's failures. Look a little bit deeper and see the successes that we have, and the worldview that's informing our actions is vastly different than the worldview informing Multnomah County's and historically Portland's actions. You know, it's hard for us to continue to trust those who helped create the problem as they supposedly have the solutions to fix them. About a year and 10 months ago, when I was a brand-new commissioner, about a few weeks in, we were about to buy a hotel, Project Turnkey. This room was packed with hundreds of people on opposition or support on either side of whether or not we should have bought that hotel in Happy Valley's UGMA, right there by Clackamas Town Center. There was a lot of deliberation on that. We don't have to rehash the whole thing. We didn't buy that hotel, but we did pivot pretty strong. We told the voters what a recovery-oriented system of care was, how it was vastly different than the models being pushed out by the state of Oregon and by Multnomah County in Portland. We explained that. We held a recovery summit from leaders from different pockets of excellence from across the nation and brought them to Clackamas County to help inform our policies. We got outside of our echo chamber. Then we started to dream a little bit big. Martha and I visited New Haven for Hope at a NACO conference down in Texas, and were inspired by their local leaders and the impact that they're having in Texas on a 23-acre campus, which has inspired our work here that we're now voted on today with our recovery campus. And then we continued to just do the work and hold staff accountable. Staff held us accountable. We stayed on message. We stayed principled in our value system, and we've had phenomenal outcomes, and now that is where the recovery campus came from, over a lot of thought and deliberation, and that's where we're going. And I would ask the voters to work with us. We were here, we're going to listen to public input. We want to hear all of it, but to help us build our community back up again, and we think that this asset is key to that. We may have said no to a hotel a year and 10 months ago, but we did say yes to recovery. We did say yes to treatment. We did say yes to prevention and intervening when necessary, and we did say yes to a state-of-the-art, world-class recovery campus like nothing this area has seen, invested in. So I would encourage voters, hold tight with us, partner with us. We're going to earn your trust in this effort, and we're going to do the best we can to solve this problem. And that is all I have today. So with that, I will adjourn today's business meeting. Thank you.